We'll call the meeting to order. Would everyone please stand, face the flag in its own plan? Join me to sign the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any additions?
Not tonight.
Okay, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as shown.
I'll need a motion.
Motion by Kurt. Second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Rob. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Representative Haley will be here. She's just not going to be here till the little actors.
Six ten.
Six ten. So we'll move down to reports and communications. We can always pick her up if she comes in. Does anybody have anything for the cause? It's summertime, we usually don't meet too much.
I just have a question. Is that going to be ready at the end of the school before school starts?
What are you pointing at?
The, or the, the round ball?
Cul-de-sac. I'm going to get into that a little bit tonight. We're going to, it's one of our light metals.
Oh.
So, it will, no, that's okay. I would like to explain to you because it got quite a bit more expensive than what they had originally talked about. So.
Okay, I just saw that.
No, it's a great question.
Check down there.
No, it will, none of that will be totally done by start of school. But, you know, our buses don't use that. Minnesota entrance will also will be okay.
Okay.
Okay, nobody has anything for the committee cause? Alright, we'll move down to public input. Does anyone have anything for the board? As far as input from the community on any, any topic regarding the board? Okay, we'll move down to consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted under one motion. Any member of the board may want to discuss any single item. It can't be, it can be removed from the consent agenda for separate action. Everyone had a chance to look? Not just take a minute to review?
I'd like to give out a big thanks to the Cannon Falls Ed Foundation. They gave us $25,700 towards technology. Enormous. It's going towards, their overall project is $350,000. And so they're keeping a look on that. And, you know, Brenda can allude to that. We just had our last meeting and we haven't given a final number. But wanted to kick it off with this $25,000. Thank you to them for their constant efforts. And then just one other item I wanted to note, if you look under personnel items. Sharon Noble has been our continuing ed person for, I don't even know how many years. It's been a really, really long time. She's listed on here, it's been a volunteer position. She's never gotten paid for it. But I think a really special thanks, and it's not because Sharon's here tonight, but because it's an enormous job. I did it when I first started here and it is a lot of work. And I just want to thank her, even when she wasn't employed by Cannon Falls School, she was still doing it for us. So, thank you Sharon for all your effort on that. Thank you Sharon.
I'll make the motion to approve. Jerry on the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Kurt. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Under old business, update on the cul-de-sac project.
Okay, I know we've been kind of piecemeal in this and kind of waiting on some things with the city. It did pass out an email tonight that I received last week from Greg Anderson. It was a final number. He is the coordinator of the entire Minnesota project. The project manager for that. And the final cost came in at $23,500. Keep in mind that this is not the street itself. All, all people that live along Minnesota Street or anything that, if they're improving your, just like if it was your home, will be paying for that as well. That'll approximately be about $15,000. That can be prorated over 10 years. So we're not worried about that. We understand that just like a homeowner, that's, that's something we're going to have to do. The unexpected was that this curb was going to be $23,000. I don't have it on your agenda as a voting item because we haven't really had a chance to talk about it. I would like our next step for me to go to Public Works and ask them if they could contribute a little bit to this as well, the city. The reason for that is this is really a safety feature for them as well. When the ambulances or fire trucks come in, I really think this is a good thing for them as well. The other note, as part of the email, keep in mind, we will be losing anywhere from seven to 12 parking spots in our, in our lot, which is not a good thing. Especially when they said no to the parallel parking along Minnesota Street. We were hoping to gain maybe 20 spots there. As you can see from the email, that won't happen. So as of right now, we do not have anything budgeted close to $23,000 for this. So even though we think this is a really nice idea, it isn't in our five-year plan. And it isn't, you know, it isn't something that we have the funds for right now. If you decide at the next meeting, when you discuss this, or want to make this a retreat item, I think that would be a wise idea. We've had time. They don't need an answer till the end of July on what we want to do on this. I'll go to Public Works and just see if they can contribute a little bit as well. But that's kind of where we're at right now. It, it got really expensive really fast. And so I'm not sure where the board wants to go with it. It's not an action item, but if you'd like to discuss it or have me do something else, I can certainly do that.
Well, the city lasts escort over 10 years, just like the $15,000?
I don't think so. It's just like an add-on for them. You know, I mean, they don't, they don't need to do it, but I could ask.
I guess we should ask. Because it's $23,000 bucks a year.
Yeah. Plus lots of interest.
Rob?
Have we seen proposed what exactly that will look like?
I haven't. That was in your two agendas ago. It was on the blue, you could click on it. It hasn't changed since then.
Okay, so parking is only, it really is going to change, there's no diagonal?
Yeah, that's the only thing that changed. And I understand the reasoning behind it, you know, people on Minnesota need to park a car there. When you get events in there, and if a fire truck did need to come in or something, then it kind of defeats what we were trying to do as far as safety goes, so. They just kind of go to no on the parking.
So outside of them possibly kicking in, well, we really don't have a choice. What's, what do we, I guess what are our?
Well, your choice would be, you don't have it in your five-year plan or your operations funding. You could.
Oh, so they just leave it go?
Yeah, you could, you know, have Josh look into a little bit of our, our fund balance, those kinds of things. But remember, that's about as low as we've ever been too. So, as of right now, I'm not really sold on it. But certainly won't have this chance again when the road is already torn up and you've got a company already here. I mean, this is a, it is an opportunity to fix some of the safety items out front.
What happens if the kid gets hit? What's it cost?
And how would a?
$23,500 if somebody gets hit out there?
You understand, like, like the other people said, you still have to cross the street. The curb doesn't do anything. I mean, you still have to walk across the street to get to the school. Do you know what I mean? Like, the traffic is still going like this, it's just now we're not going like this. The traffic you really need to worry about is the traffic that goes like this.
Going back parking lot.
Yeah, the back, flying back to the back parking lot. That's why we put those big signs up. Dave did a nice job of putting those out there. That's probably helped the most. When we resurface here in a couple of weeks, we're going to really bold out some lock things that we don't have right now. Right now, it's like, where, where is the crosswalk? Because there really isn't one. So that traffic is still extremely, we won't call it dangerous, it's just so fast. And we're trying to get the pickup different and things like that. What Minnesota does is it stops the third angle from coming into the school. You know, you could argue that the parking lot has a third entrance as well, so.
I think my angle is it's going to eliminate that.
No, unfortunately, you still need to walk across. I mean, the parking lot too, we'll still have to walk across. But what it's going to eliminate is people like pulling through there to drop off kids. So like a lot of parents do that, to drop off kids and pick up kids, that you're not supposed to do. Barb?
Well, I guess my, I, I know what the cul-de-sac is for, but why don't we just do it on that street?
You could, you, you could.
I, I know, cul-de-sac is nice over the turnaround.
It's funny, one of the engineers said that too, you know, you do have every right to.
Block it.
Block it. But the problem then is if a fire truck or someone needed to get in, but then you would.
They're going to go the other way.
Right.
Cul-de-sac's not going to get a fire truck through, so why don't we just?
Well, they'd be rounded, so you could go up and over them. It wouldn't be a hard curb, it would be a rounded curb.
We have two other ways to get in the parking lot. Why don't we just put on curb stops or something for a couple thousand dollars that is brightly colored? Something a couple feet tall.
I think this would be a great retreat conversation because then by then I'll know, I'll have a Public Works meeting done. Greg Anderson will know if he can, he's going to try really hard to at least give us that parallel parking. Because for me, that would be worth something to be able to get some, you know, more parking for seniors, especially that's a little bit closer. You know, none of us expected it to get to $23,000. He had, when he guesstimated, if you remember correctly, it was around $12,000. So, I will check on the 15 years to see if that can be rolled in, what that would look like. And I will check with Public Works to see if they want to contribute anything to it. And I will check on just dead-ending it and see what that looks like. I think that's a great idea too. And then at the retreat, I can get back to you on the finalizations. I'd be a little concerned if we only had our July end of the meeting, but we do have a retreat built in there. So I feel like, you know, it's a little wiggle room on there. Sound okay? So it's just an update, it's not a voting item, I just kind of wanted to, I know you're probably tired of hearing about it, but.
So will we be making the decision to retreat then?
We could, we can make it an action item if we wanted to. That'd be fine. We'll, we'll let Lori know as soon as I get those final answers, we can make that an action item very easily.
Were we all in support of this in the past, or did we give them the go-ahead we're in?
No, they, they know we're waiting on the download, and he knew when he sent it to me. He called me, he goes, I just emailed you the amount a little more than I thought, you know, so. No, they, they, they don't carry the weight as we do, their project is their project, so they're fine with it. What was in the paleo scan?
Does she need a moment to the?
Should, you can do that.
Let's, let's, consideration to approve the 1820 office support contract.
Okay. Welcome, we'll be right with you, I promise. You had this on your last agenda, we hadn't made it, we were having trouble with some of the technology in back. If you have any questions, I can certainly go through it. You won't find things that are line item out, you won't find any of that because it is a new contract. This is a contract I'm very proud of. It takes a lot of the great things that we had from the secretarial contract, but makes it a more, more appropriate for the days that are actually worked. The salary's the same, I think that's important to recruit good people, all of those kinds of things. But the benefits match more of a nine-month employee versus a 12-month. So, I know you've all had, you know, a few weeks to look at this now. It is up here if you want to talk about any specific items. Again, this is a very standard contract. It's just as people retire or resign, we will move them over to this contract. If there's any questions, I'll go ahead and take those now, otherwise, my recommendation would be to approve this. You currently have no one on this contract.
Make motion to approve the 1820 office support contract. It's a motion by Rob.
I'll second.
Seconded. By Katie. Other discussion?
Just looking, I was trying to find, I was going to send it, looking at it, is the vacation?
No. Well, you get, I mean, with student contact days only being 174, and then you add in, you know, some extra days that the principals actually need people. It wouldn't be common in a part-time person to not have that, so.
Katie, we've got a motion, a second on the floor. All in favor of the 1820 office support contracts, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's Carrie. Okay, jumping back to scheduled presenters, our representative Barb Haley is here. Welcome.
She's going to be talking about all of this passion that I've had behind youth skills training. She was one of the keynote people, we're so appreciative of her hard work on it. It was fun to follow her lead and to eventually get this grant. And they're, they know all about it, they've heard me kind of very, very excited. And we know that this is going to do some really great things for Cannon Falls kids. So, if you want to kind of dig into youth skills training, we're all pretty excited about it, so.
Yeah, that, 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 it's really fun to talk about things that started with an idea, you know, all the way through the legislation, passed, money.
It's like gone too well.
Right, right, and that actually happened in our district that we're reaping the benefits, so. Especially when you have a big veto this past session, it's fun for me to say, well, we got this really great thing done.
Yep.
I'm going to pass these out. And then a second one that specifically talks about investment in schools. And if anybody here attending to it, if you want to share.
Still get some, so excited. I still get a little goosebumps, it's just so fun.
I know, I agree, I agree. So yeah, let's start with that. And, and Beth, you said everybody really has the details on it?
Um, yeah, for the most part, they understand, you know, what we're getting and what did it include? And, you know, it isn't money to the districts, we need to be clear on that. That we're not just getting $95,000. And I'll let you get into that, but yes, they know the, the general things, that it's not just a, a grant that's, that's money into our fund. It's money that we can spend.
And so, I, I think you all know, one of the things I'm, I'm really passionate about is making sure that we provide opportunities for kids while they're in high school to be better prepared for, whether it's the workforce they want to enter right away, or, you know, additional training, or two or four-year colleges. And I'm a big believer in, you know, what can the state government do to also then partner really well with schools? Leave the flexibility up to our local schools, or bring you additional resources outside of even, you know, two plus two on your formula. But also bring private industry involved, because that's the connection, I think, that we have to, you know, work on, to help everybody. So that's kind of where this stemmed from. And in order to get high school kids onto, say, a manufacturing floor for that experience, we had to work with the Department of Labor and Industry. It's not an apprenticeship program, because when you talk about an apprenticeship, that's a specific even federal term in industry that has all its own kind of legalities around it, even with trade unions. So that's why this is called youth skills training. But in your mind, you can kind of equate it to the ideas to give them an, you know, apprenticeship kind of experience. But we had to make sure that current, even federal and state statute would say that an under 18-year-old can't be using equipment, you know, in a manufacturing setting. So we had to work on that and get that, that approval process. And then also, we wanted to ensure that they could get credit. They could get credit for their time working, and they could get appropriate credit for a, a class in school that related. So we're going to give them soft skills training. Things, you know, just how do you write a business letter, respond to an email, or how do you talk to your boss? And don't have your phone out. How, those kind of soft skills that manufacturers really want. And also something related to work. So, but we're going to start with OSHA 10 requirements. And they'll be able to take those credits then into post-secondary. And again, whether it's a two-year or a four-year certificate program. That, to, important to me, because we have a lot of kids that, you know, may be doing a four-year college path, and they're doing PSCO. But as you know, in PSCO, you get kind of dinged. It's a bad thing about those programs that you're losing those credit hours. So this also shelters the school district, you're not losing any money. And yet these kids are getting some post-secondary credit. So that was an important piece to me. It's being managed under Department of Labor and Industry, DOLI. The grant is really for the collaborative, and Beth was a huge part of this. So we brought together all of, you know, Goodview County, so Red Wing and, and Kenyon, Wannabango, Cannon Falls, Lake City. And the money's really going to that collaborative and to have kind of a backbone entity to all the coordination. So that you don't have to, again, pull resources from your, you know, your teaching staff in order to coordinate it. But they, but when we're fully implemented, it'll be 50 kids, 30 kids?
Fifty.
Thirty, fifty kids.
It might start smaller, I mean, obviously, year one might be smaller than that. Yeah.
But as I'm out talking to manufacturers too, they're, they're really excited about it. They, they wanted this to happen, but like I said, didn't have the process. So now we'll learn, you know, with the first pilot, but hopefully it'll break down, you know, some of those other barriers in the community.
Some people are nervous about the 16-year-olds, you know, working and their insurance. So some, some businesses have pulled back. But I think after they see how well it goes year one, like the, the businesses that are on board with this, I think they'll see, oh, this could really, really help both sides. So I think year one is really instrumental in what we do for the future.
Yeah, I agree.
The, the few that are nervous are mostly insurance-related. You know, what happens if a 17-year-old is working and accident happens, you know, and all those things? Are they the school, or are they the business, you know, those kinds of things, so.
But there, there were only five pilot grants awarded around the whole state, so you should feel very good that we got one of those five. Other schools can do it, you know, we passed the legislation and the program's in place. But not everybody's going to get money towards, so we got one of the five pilot grants, so.
Something else that's come out of this, and you may not even know this until the night meeting. The, the college in Red Wing came over and met with me, they're coming over again this Thursday. They love our back room so much, they are going to run a class here. That's through the university, it has nothing to do with youth skills training, but because this was all going on, they said maybe we should go over, they've got some really great equipment there. Gemini's on board and they're working on a partnership there. So it's just, now what's happening is it's, it's bringing more businesses thinking, we should think the PSCO model in a different way. Don't take these kids out of high school. Some of them could walk away with a degree. You know, when they walk across the stage, they're not only getting a high school diploma, they could possibly be getting a certificate, or a small degree, or something like that. So, pretty excited, I'm meeting with Travis on Thursday on that, and we're very excited to take that next step too. So, this has really branched off into some pretty great stuff.
So we rented out the space too?
Yeah, we would be. They, they would bring the professor though, and what's big about that is we just finding staffing. Chris Scott and Walter are amazing, but they can't take on anymore, they're already on six assignments. So for them to bring that equipment, you know, to use our equipment, but to bring the professor and to rent the space, and then the funding, I mean, it's just, it's so similar. This model is really going to take off. It's really, Barb, your work has just been amazing on this, so thank you.
Thank you, I'm glad to see other things happening. Well, since you're talking about Southeast Tech, Minnesota, other post-secondary things, I serve on the higher ed committee as well. And one of my pieces of legislation was for what we call workforce scholarships. And I'm a, again, believer, public-private, we have to bring both entities together. So we put a million dollars towards scholarships in high-demand fields. Advanced in manufacturing, agriculture, IT, healthcare. And those are for up to $5,000, so two-year, $2,500 scholarships. For, again, students going into that field, whether they did a two-year or a four-year, didn't matter. So all the Minnesota state systems around the, the state have been offering these scholarships. And so make sure, I hope, again, that takes off and leads to further things. So make sure that your students know about it, and if they're interested in Southeast Tech or any one of the technical schools around the state. We want to help kids, you know, chart that next step and have a path and help make it affordable. So that's another good piece. On the education front, you know, this gives you a good summary of, over the biennium, the money that we put in, into education. You know, we put, you know, two and two on the formula, we put money into early learning programs. This past session, the pension bill passed, which is a, you know, very big deal to finally get that resolved. Both for, you know, for teachers and for police and fire. So, wanted to let you know that that got done. The other things we were working on, both in K-12 and higher ed, were rolled into the final super mega omnibus bill that was joined with the tax bill, and the governor vetoed that whole package. So unfortunately, all of our other kind of policy, and even the additional money we had for K-12 got, got vetoed. So, we'll come back in 2019 and might be a little bit like Groundhog's Day, we'll revisit some of those things. We, we did have a significant additional money for schools in that package. So I just want to let you know that, you know, we kind of heard loud and clear from schools who are facing budget deficits. And we wanted to provide some initial support. The money, let's see if I have my best spreadsheet with me. We put money into, and this was, again, my legislation, it was vetoed, but I just want to let you know, into the school safety, safe schools levy. The current safe schools levy is about $35 per pupil. And that can go towards things like mental health counselors, or other counselors, or school resource officers. And with the unfortunate incidences around the country of school shootings, I wanted to do something to address that. And when I looked at those safe schools levy, it didn't seem fair to me that, you know, rural districts don't get as much. Because when it's per-pupil based, we're never going to get what even Barre or Minnetoka gets. So my bill was to equalize that levy and increase it. So we increased it to almost $60 a pupil. And we put in a floor of $30,000. So a school district like Cannon Falls would at least have some enough money to partner with their local law enforcement and be able to, you know, hire again a school resource officer, if that was your choice, mental health counselor, wherever you needed it, the flexibility was, was up to you.
Right, and that got vetoed.
That got vetoed. So I wanted to let you know that I was fighting for that. The additional aid to Cannon Falls would have been, and again, we were doing direct state aid, so we weren't putting the burden on the property taxpayers, so they weren't requiring you to wait for a levy. This was going to be direct aid, it would have been about $66,000. So I don't know if we will, in 2019, you know, will we revisit that, that idea? I would hope that we would. And if there's, you know, interest in that, I'll, I'll carry that bill again. So think about that and give me your, you know, your insight and your input. I do keep in touch with the superintendents frequently. You'll want, you know, Beth and I email back and forth. I, I try to reach out when things come up to say, how would this play in Cannon Falls? Would this be good for your district, Beth? Or do you have advice on how we should tweak it?
And she actually does listen to. It's kind of nice.
Well, thank you.
We need mine.
Well, you, you know, sometimes you're, you're, you're considering legislation or something in committee or drafting, and you really don't know how the rubber's going to, you know, meet the rope. So, I try to reach out and say, is this going to do what we intend to do, or do we need to make some changes? I'll, I'll, I'll let you just, you know, tell me what's on your mind too, if you have questions on things that we did this session, whether it's, you know, taxes, or healthcare, or anything else. But I'd also like to hear from you, what's on your radar going forward? What does the district need? You know, what things are, are happening for your teachers, your staff, your students that they'd like me to be aware of?
There was a time when two and two was an acceptable amount, almost a minimum standard. And then we go through seven or eight years of zero funding, or minimal funding. Is there a crystal ball out there to see the thoughts of the next biennium at all?
Well, if I knew that, I'd, I'd probably have a different rank. I don't, you know, the next biennium will have new, a new governor. Will have new leadership, you know, every biennium then in the House and the Senate. You can elect a new, you know, Speaker of the House and President of the Senate. And you could have a, you know, a mix in both bodies, so it's, it's hard to tell. I believe, regardless of party, education is important to Minnesotans. We have a, you know, pretty long track record of continuing to invest in education. We believe that's kind of a hallmark of our state, and it's important to all of our communities. The negotiation's always going to happen. You know, whether we start at, you know, one and a half, and somebody else is at four. That's just going to play out each session. I think what you've seen at least in, you know, the two years I've been there, is additional money's put other places. You know, Governor Dayton's focus was on early childhood, so a lot of money went there. That doesn't get reflected in your budget necessarily, you know, when you're looking at, okay, you have two and two to work with. But I think it's important for people to recognize, there's large amounts of money going into other areas of education that's just not on the formula. This session in bonding, for example, we put an additional $25 million in the bonding bill for school safety. So school districts can use that for physical improvements to their buildings. So it's, again, it's not just the formula. I think a big challenge that we have to address is the special education that's.
Just going to say that. I think until you fix that formula and the cross subsidy, because our district could be doing really well, but when you're $400,000 to $600,000 of cross subsidy, you have ballpark every year. What, I mean, 2% doesn't do anything.
Right.
You know, it doesn't even, it doesn't even cover that, so. And I wish we knew what that was going to be every year, but it's, you never ever know.
Right.
So.
Sometimes I feel like the legislative league that, that our people up in St. Paul maybe have some pet projects that they think is good, whether it's the governor saying early childhood. But they just don't seem to repair that cross subsidy, which is just, it, it just gets deeper and deeper for all of us. And it's not a pet project, it's really an urgent need. And I just don't, I don't see it becoming. an issue like things like early childhood do, so.
Right. I will tell you, Bob, it's on everybody's radar. We had quite a bit of testimony on it this session. And in the bill that got vetoed was to form a working group, and that is a significant step forward. There's been other things like teacher license, there are other things like that where the, the, the working group has done an excellent job, and they come back and then give recommendations to the legislature. So we have something that school districts have, you know, thought through and are coming to us with recommendations. So we're gonna have to revisit that. We hear it, or I mean, I hear it from every one of my districts, that the numbers are staggering. Minnesota, for those of you who don't, don't know, when special education laws were first passed, the federal government was supposed to fund forty percent. And the school districts were supposed to pick up sixty. The federal government has never met the forty percent. We get maybe less than twenty.
Oh, it can't be twenty.
It's not even that, maybe ten. So when we talk about the gap, that's why that exists. So the states aren't, you know, picking up what the feds said, said they were gonna do it. But what Minnesota additionally did is we go above and beyond what the feds require for special education services. So we have additional requirements and layers, so that's, you know, that's good, but it's costing you more. I think with a state, we need to figure out, where is our money having an impact? And are there some things that can be changed, revised in our requirements that won't, you know, hurt kids and families, but maybe reduce some burdens on you as a district, or reduce some regulations? One of the things we did a couple of years ago was tried to reduce the paperwork. And the, the time that's spent on paperwork in special ed is hugely, you know, it's just a cost, like in any other business. So there was an effort to reduce special education forms, you know, by twenty-five percent. So, we hear you, know it's an issue. I, I can't predict where we're gonna go with it, but I, I would agree with you, things that got, you know, a lot of airtime, like early education, you know, we need to shine a light on this special ed issue, because it's, it's eating up, it's eating up all your budgets. You're, you're taking out of your general fund to meet that, which then is restricting, I'm sure, your ability to hire new teachers and have additional classes and all those other things.
Well, even the early, I mean, every year we've applied for it, we've never gotten. So we're not benefiting from it, you know, our, our parents pay for it, we don't have, you know, just, we just never qualified. You know, we don't hit some of the marks that, that are needed, so we don't get that funding.
Not getting that benefit. Okay.
So in the federal funding, whether it's about ten percent, there's supposed to be a forty, is that nationwide, they're only doing ten, or is it by state, by state?
No, I think that's nationwide, I could clarify that for you. And I'm, I'm just guessing on the ten.
Sharon, do you happen to know?
I don't know.
I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah.
It's, it's not the forty. You can say that or you can't.
I just wonder if it's nationwide that they're reducing everyone equally, or certain states hitting the forty, certain states less than forty.
And it's not even that they're reducing.
Or just.
They never, they never.
They never.
Never have. They've never paid for the share that they said they were gonna pay. You know, when you look at our state's, state's budget, and you look at education, both K-12 and higher ed, and then look at health and human services, those two buckets comprise about eighty percent of the state's money. So the decisions, you know, they're always difficult decisions, because our health insurance, our serving, you know, the disabled, the mental health, I mean, opioids, all those things that fall into HHS are huge, huge, costly issues. So it's, it's not that, you know, education isn't important, it's we're trying to figure out where to move pockets of money, and where the feds are giving us money, and where they're not. So I, I, since I serve on both of those committees, I, I mean, I intensely feel that pressure all the time. What else?
Speed mandated, non-funded.
Yeah, okay.
More autonomy for the local districts would be nice.
Okay, uh-huh. Give me, what's, what's an example of, of unfunded mandate that particularly affects you?
Something like teacher evaluations, principal evaluations, or student evaluations. I, I don't, we keep reducing administration because we have to. We've made reductions again this year. We have a assistant principal, do a dean of students. I, I agree with Bob, I wish that there was some more local on that, because the mandates that you implemented never came with any, that you, but they never came with any funding. And those types of things, and I could keep going on and on, but there's a lot of things that are just really tough to do when we don't have the money for extra administration. It could take a full-time person to do three teacher evaluations on teachers every year, and the administration, and all of that. Some of the testing requirements, I mean, every district basically has to have a DAC coordinator of some kind, because there's so much assessment, and you're aware of that, and you just test, test, test these kids. No funding comes for that DAC coordinator, but, yeah, we have to report all these test results to the state.
Yeah. We're just in general, are we supposed to provide a psychologist in our facility, or is that, was that up for discussion?
Hasn't gone through.
Hasn't gone through.
But, you know, just school counselors in general, and some of those things. Some of the special licensing requests. When I can't get someone, there's no colleges offering that degree, and yet you want me to hire them. Those are mandates that are really tough to fill if we can't, you know, and even our own contracts could, we can't give out a bonus or something like that, because our own contracts have limitations there. Do you want me to keep going? There's just a lot of.
Do you get, do you get Q comp money, or are you part?
We do not. We benefit actually from not doing that.
Okay.
We're one of those kind of lower districts. We've looked at it a couple of times, but, and we should revisit it again, but, yeah, we don't do Q comp.
Okay, okay.
We filled her plate. Does anybody have anything else for her? Well, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
We appreciate.
Just in closing, like I said, Beth and I, you know, talk frequently, but please call anytime, and I really sincerely mean that. That's what I'm there for, whether it's, you know, education or other things. And if it's even, you know, questions too on, on mandates or policy, we have an excellent staff there. And they're more than willing to look into something for you, you know, research. So, don't hesitate to do that. And also, I do a weekly email update. I keep it really nonpartisan. I'm just telling you, here's what's happening at the Capitol this week, or a bill I'm carrying, or you know, kind of where we are in legislative session. So if you wanna get that email, just email my office. And we'll add you to that, and I, I find people appreciate, they just feel like they know more what's, what's happening during session. So please do that if you wanna get a clue.
Well, thanks again.
Thank you for coming.
I'm off to the veteran affairs meeting.
Oh, I wondered if you're going to the school bargaining or what you're.
And we'll see you at the Canada Fair next week.
Oh, that's right.
The brace. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Okay, continuing on, now we are into new business on page two. Consideration to add Tuesday, November thirteenth, twenty eighteen at six P M as a regular board meeting.
We never did a second November meeting. We were gonna kind of wait and see what we wanted to do, but Veterans Day falls on the twelfth. My suggestion and Lori's suggestion would be just to slide it to Tuesday, right after, so we don't get off on our weeks. We do think it's important to have that meeting that week. So I'm not sure how everyone feels about a Tuesday night, but our recommendation would be to have the meeting on Tuesday, November thirteenth.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Kurt. Seconded by Brenda. Other discussion. All in favor of this date change, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Consideration to retract the mobility leave request for eighteen nineteen.
Okay, I'm gonna talk about number two and number three kind of together, so you understand what's going on. We have received CESE grant funding. I did not write this grant, this is not a Beth grant. This is a remarkable grant that G C D was able to secure for us. It will allow us to get a behavioral coach in the elementary school, working on things, helping with special education, working on proper behavior, and teaching our teachers, especially our newer teachers, how to work on some of these behavioral interventions that are so important in the early ages. They will be doing a ton of data collection and things like that. This will not cost us anything, but we found a great candidate to do this, she happens to be on mobility leave. She's willing to come back for a point six and do this position. So the consideration to retract a mobility leave would be for Carissa Jolting. And then number three would actually be to hire her for the point six, if you're so inclined. I think it's gonna be very difficult to find someone with her skill set. She is very, very talented in this area, this is something right up her alley. She understands that it could be one year, it could be three years. We don't know if the grant will renew. It will not count against her years for mobility leave and things like that. She will be on a Cannon Falls contract. That was important to her, not to leave our contract, because then she would be forfeiting, you know, her seniority and things like that. We did work that out with G C D, Lake City, Red Wing, and Cannon Falls are all gonna stay on their home districts. The other districts are going to go on to a G C D. So that's what I have. So number two would be to retract the mobility leave for Carissa Jolting. I'll make a motion.
One second.
Motion by Katie, seconded by Brenda. Yes, retract the mobility leave for Carissa Jolting. Other discussion.
Now, just in general, when we move to number three, does that affect this, this motion here?
Number three would go away. If you don't approve number two, number three would most likely go away. We would just forfeit the grant funding.
Right.
Because we posted it, and they've posted it, and there's no, there's just no teachers that'll work for point six. But it's fine, if you, yeah, if you would wanna do that, you should.
That would be dumb.
Yeah. I didn't say that.
I guess the questions that he has is, now, the position that's available, she was a teacher for elementary. What are the, what is her qualifications, that sort of thing, as a behavioral coach?
She needs to have a teaching license, is the only qualification.
So, I guess, looking at behavioral coach, what does that entail?
She was one of the leaders when we started, and we implemented P B I S. She has an extra skill set, because she went to a lot of additional training for that. She also just has kind of a, Sharon, one of my look at for, the right skill set. Some people have areas of specialty. Brian Swanson's is math. I mean, you can, he can work with kids that are struggling in math, and he can work with kids that are really excelling in math. He, he can do that. Carissa has a real talent, kind of like an E V D teacher would, on minimizing behaviors, and she's, she's got the trust of the staff, so when she's teaching them implementation of behavioral strategies, they're going to believe her. You can't hire a brand-new teacher for this position. They need to be able to understand and, and believe what she's, what she's teaching them.
Would she get additional training through G C E D on that?
She would. She attends meetings once a month. She would attend nine meetings with them. She would receive the additional training. And she would be doing all the cohort things through G C D as well.
So usually, these positions are filled by a teacher who takes extra training, or is there some special?
Sharon, how about, I think they're all just licensed teachers. They're typically teachers that are going back to school for something like this. Sometimes people wanna go from teaching to counselor, teaching to social work. This would be a, a type of a teaching position that would graduate, you know, kind of that path.
And they have to be a master teacher.
Okay.
Like Beth said, it can't be someone who's.
It can't be, no, it can't be.
And then some, let's say this position's filled, and then how long does that last? Is it just a?
One year for a young.
Okay.
And again, I did not, and no credit on this, but I didn't have anything to do with this grant. Jillian Raymond was kind of the key author on it, and she was able to secure it for everybody.
Okay. And just one more question.
Yeah, no, it's great.
As that happens, now, does that reinstate her, and then if she decides to move on again and step away from the position, where does that land her with her, when she took the mobility leave request?
It's a great question. The contract covers her really well. We've worked with the E A on this as well. Deanne Coleman's been really involved in this process, making sure that when she comes back, she would have the same rights she has as she left. Her letter very clearly states she's not withdrawing from her one-point-oh status. She's doing us a favor by doing point six, but she didn't wanna let go of that one-point-oh, and that, that's really fair on both sides. We're very, very lucky that she applied for this position to be perfectly frank.
Other discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
You've got it. You get a motion and a second on the floor, right?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor of retracting the mobility leave for the upcoming school year, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Now, piggybacking on that, consideration to hire a point-six F T E behavioral coach with the CESE grant funds.
Well, that's what I was gonna make a motion for.
Okay. Are you doing it now?
You're so advanced tonight.
Now I'm showing you how.
All right, Brenda made the motion. Jerry, you did? Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the hire of a one-point-oh F T E elementary position.
Well, you remember from a couple of weeks ago, I kinda gave you the movement of everyone moving around. We had Mr. Gunderson moved to art and R T I, and we had Mr. Sanson move over to sixth grade. So tonight, we are lucky enough to be able to hire for a fifth-grade job. Everyone's done moving around internally. And so we hired Taryn Zaska, is how you pronounce her last name, like Fresca, but it's with a Z. And we're very, very excited to offer her her very first teaching job. Just seems like a really, really great candidate. She stood out in the interviews, so if Ms. Chapey was here, she would give you her recommendation to hire Taryn.
Okay, do we hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Jerry.
Okay.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to post, or approve, to post and hire one-point-oh F T E elementary position.
Well, it happened. Of course, everyone that's moved into the district has been in first grade and ninth grade. And you know what that means. That was the grade that we reduced. And I'm glad that we did, to wait for those numbers to come in. I, this, I think this shows that our procedure and policy works really, really well. We are, we, one of the classes hit your maximum, your number of twenty-three. You have two things you could do here. You could tell us to wait until the other three classes fill in. I think they will, but you already had one at twenty-three. So it would be our recommendation tonight to hire, or to at least post, and hire for a first-grade teacher.
But what's the easy numbers here? We added some kids.
Correct.
And so how many did we add in first grade?
Six. Wow. Well, and I think nine ninth graders, which is our kids' grade.
We, we had this happen before.
Yeah, this has happened before. Yeah, this has happened many times before, and we have other students moving out of other grades, so it just, until it's August thirty-first, we just kind of let them all bounce around. If you feel that it's too soon and you wanna wait, you could do that. Ms. Chapey does have a candidate from the fifth-grade interviews, that is still known in the district, and a very strong candidate. So we don't feel like, we've already interviewed, and the team feels really good about her, so some of that's playing into it too.
When we downsized, did we make a commitment that if we got, like, that fourth-grade position, we needed five, I think we eventually got six?
You passed those guidelines, the, the class guidelines. And so what I'm saying is, one of the classes has hit your number, but not the other two. So, you know, you can wait till they both hit it, and then we could talk about it in July, we could do that. Or we could do it now and, and get the best candidate, no longer you wait. Although we hired some fabulous candidates in, in August as well.
So we've had one class that's hit twenty-three.
And, you know, two more that could.
How far are the two away?
Just one. We, we place them equally in classes when they move into the district.
To a twenty-two.
Well, I think that's kind of the best-case scenario, where we waited because we didn't have the numbers. Now we got the new students, and I think we can justify hiring now.
You are at the same number of kindergarten, and you kept kindergarten at four sections, so keep that in mind too.
Yeah, I make a motion.
A second.
Is a motion by Brenda and a second by Katie to approve the post and hire of the one-point-oh elementary position. Other discussion?
So now we're speculating that we could meet that, we're, right now, we're still within our parameters.
Right, correct.
And we don't know if.
I'm sorry, second.
We have not gone over.
You have not gone over your limit, no. But I, I'd like to put on here, this is when you can, you can make these decisions, that's what cohorts do. So if you choose to wait, we can do that. If you would like to do it now, we can do that too.
So we take three more students to go over and back.
Technically, two more, because you. Technically, two more because you've already got one full, you have three sections.
Yeah.
And you have one full, so two more.
But three would take us over.
Correct.
I'm sorry, Gus, this is from what grade?
First grade. It's your only grade, you have it three sections. Keep in mind too, that when, you know, they came to us, there is a high special education population in this grade. Am I still correct on that, Sharon? It is high. Do you know what the number is?
I don't.
You don't? Okay.
So what is, what have you seen in the past that you might meet that goal?
They go up before they go down.
At, at this time of year, you start to see people still registering?
August will be the big, and Lori can maybe attest for the suit. August would be your biggest movement, wouldn't it be, Lori?
Yeah.
Yes. She does all the people.
She can see influx of more people coming in.
That's when people remember that in schools.
That they have to register.
Oh, yeah.
You know, we're talking a couple of different things here philosophically in our primary grade. We've always tried to keep the numbers low. And, and we were kind of forced by our low numbers to revert back to the three classrooms. And it just, it goes against what we've always believed here. And especially when we get into those K1 and 2 grades.
Well, I think most importantly, we're following policy. And I think that's really something you can be proud of. You know, we don't, we don't just wing it anymore and we don't just use, we use parameters. And in one class, you hit that parameter. So I'm bringing it to you. We can talk about this again in July if you want. I like the idea of hiring someone now. We know we've hit one of them. You're certainly not gonna go down. Well, I guess it could, you know.
What about candidates, the number of candidates? If, if we wait, how many, like, are you gonna really diminish the amount of people you have that apply for it?
There's already a, a significant teaching shortage out there. We only had, I believe, 24 candidates for the fifth-grade job. And when I was an elementary principal, we'd have 140? 100? Easy. They just, there's teachers of just, a lot less candidates, just in general, out there. Elementary's still pretty good. You know, it's the English position or the math position that can be a little tougher. Jennifer's not here, I can't say exactly, but I, I believe that was the number.
So if they hired another teacher and no one else came in, registered, would, would that bring the class sizes down to 16?
Right now, you have 22, 22, 23.
Other discussion? Do we have any?
Let's vote.
We, we have a motion in the second on the floor to post and hire for a 1.0. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That is, what was the vote?
3-3.
3-3. So the post and hire fails, higher 3-3.
I will, if it's okay with the board, if you're okay with me doing this, I will put it on the July, not because I'm, I'm arguing with your decision at all, but because I think it's important to revisit. If that's okay, if it's not a superintendent disagrees with you, it's that I just think that we should revisit it again in July.
And that's, I think, looking across the table, I think that's where Rob and I would tend to fall.
Sure. You, I, I just want you to know that you're gonna see it again. I don't, I want you to know.
And we're totally okay. I'm, I'm totally okay.
Grab us every month, 13 if you want. It's, we see what it comes and goes.
Sure.
The other grades could also, how many other grades are closed? Anyone else get close to the cap besides Nate?
No, they shouldn't be, no. Because we have four sections in everything.
Okay. Reductions?
No.
I'm just looking at the budget. I mean, I know we're skinned by already, just hate to make a premature decision.
I just think it's always funny when they move in, they're like, why are they always falling the same grades? I mean, if you listen to Kirsten Hockman, she would tell you, it's always funny. That's like, oh, you're moving to Cannon Falls, you must have a seventh grader because we just can, it's just, there's always kind of those certain grades, so.
If we just work this out mathematically, we, we're okay. We're all okay with what just happened. But if we work it out mathematically and we, we gain those six and keep, and keep that number, what does that generate for the district with six new students?
What's our number at right now?
About 42,000.
Yeah, I mean, roughly.
36 to 40,000.
So you're not breaking even per se on the new six kids, but you know, you do have some high demands in that, that grade too. So, and that, that certainly plays into my factor of putting this in here in June. Get that many kids moving in, it feels like a lot, you know, especially with, you know, what's on there. So, well, let's revisit it in July and we'll feel good about that. And we'll have to probably obviously re-interview the candidates and things like that, but that's okay too.
Okay, can I ask a question then? Because I wanna make sure I'm understanding this. So with three sections, we'd be at?
20, I believe, and Ms. Chappie's not here, but it's 22, 22, 23.
What would, what would we be if we added a teacher with four sections?
16, 17.
Yeah, 16, 16, 17, 17.
Well, 17 would be the average.
Yep, you'd have to look at the average. All right.
All right. Number six, consideration to approve the 18, 19 fall assistant coaches.
On the board, you will see the list. Pretty standard. You do see a couple volunteers. Just keep in mind that Lori does a great job. They have them background checked and all of those types of things. You have any specific questions? I know John or Jake sent you a, kind of a list of things, so if you have anything on there, I can try to help. He is coaching a big T-ball tonight. Is that what it was, T-ball? I think so.
Motion by Jerry to approve, second?
No, second.
Second by Kurt. Other discussion?
I don't, you know, you can ask that boosters are paying for some of the possible coaching. And that is kosher and approved by the administration. And then they pay what we request. It's not being boosters or driving.
Correct. That is correct. And they have to do it that way, yeah.
Okay.
The biggest one there is football and they've done a really nice job with it in the past.
That's good.
Is Green High Coach included in that?
Mm-hmm. That's what's listed there. Seventh, eighth, JV, ninth grade, all that.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion, a second on the floor. All in favor of the 18, 19 fall assistant coaches approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Consideration to approve the final fiscal year 18 budget.
All right, you've got it in your packet. I'll put it up here and turn it over to Josh.
So, you guys are pretty familiar with this. This is the third budget in the last four or five months, either revised or initial for the next fiscal year that you've seen. So just kind of walk you through the basic outline first is, the middle section is the initial budget you guys approved last May for fiscal year 18, just like we did last month for fiscal year 19. So there are a lot of changes that have between the initial proposed budget and this final revised one. There is one revised mid-year and then this final revised. So just kind of talk a little bit about where we're at. Initially, we thought we were pretty, pretty balanced with the budget. And then the final, we end up, you know, assuming that we hit everything through the end of the fiscal year and audit, spending down the general fund about $22,000, $23,000. While it's not something that in our office, we would like to see a spend down of general fund. In terms of percentages, it's very minimal. It's less than one-half of 1% spend down on the projected audit if we hit the number exactly again. The goal hopefully would be to get us at one point where we're in that 8 to 12, up to 16%, where orders would like to see us to feel comfortable. We've been operating at about that 7 to 9% for many years. Not that it's a comfortable feeling, but it's something that we've kind of grown a little accustomed in our office to, to dealing with and with the board, to deal with. When you look at where the initial revenues were, initial expenditures were compared to where they're at now, in terms of the differences, you see a variation of an increase of almost $400,000 on both revenue and the expenditure side. And the explanations for those things can be many and varied, but essentially it comes down to when we get our information in May and put together proposed budget, not everything in the state in a what-if formula and the calculations are completely update incorrect yet. Not only that, we have in our planning and outlook for expenditures are completely up to date. There may be additions to the budget like there were tonight with teachers and whatnot and staff as we go and look through an actual year-end audit and see where we actually spent versus where we've kind of proposed things and have to make adjustments. So that kind of explains some of the variances between the initial budget, when we proposed it last May compared to where we are now with our final revised for fiscal year 18. So we have followed in about that ballpark of $800,000 for projected audit total in the general fund. And again, a slight spend down. Food service, really, if we're kind of tightening things up and going through, everything through year-end stays pretty much plus or minus or cost neutral. Slight increase in food service, not a whole, a lot. Community service, this would be where we went forward as we budget items. Now that preschool teachers have kind of fallen into the general, teachers' contract, we have some benefit in those types of issues that we have to kind of allocate towards general fund. But you see a spend down in the general fund, or sorry, the community ed service fund in large part due on salary benefits in preschool and teaching contracts. Construction, we spent down the rest of that HVAC project. There are a couple of items to clean up after fiscal year 17. So there was no revenue coming into the construction project during fiscal year 18, just the wrap-up of the cost to close out that project. Debt service, you see the large expenditure and really the large revenue that came in. One bond was refunded in fiscal year 18. In fiscal year 17, there was another bond that was refunded. So the expenditure is both of those bonds being paid out and the escrow on both of them. And you will see generally about a two, a $2.2 million revenue and expenditures is what you'll normally see in our debt service. So you see $9 million in revenue, $60 million in expenditures. That's what happened, we refunded those bonds. In terms of general fund, it does nothing for the district. There's no extra cash flow for operations. But what it does is it lowers the impact on our taxpayers. The debt service levy will be decreased because of that refunding. Trust and agencies, our scholarship fund. Normally, you'll see us spend that down in a fiscal year. What had happened this year is one of the scholarships, the, kind of the proprietor of that or the main person in control of one, really went out and sought a lot of donations to increase and offer two large scholarships on behalf of their son. And that, all revenue came in in fiscal year 18, but it'll be paid out in August when that, it's a different fiscal year. So you see a little increase in our trust and agency. The OPEB debt and OPEB trust are paying down on the other post-employment benefit bond that we have. Again, you'll see at the end of fiscal year 18, we really have one year to pay or to help offset some of those costs as we usually reduce about $100,000 from that bond to help offset some of our other employment or retiree benefits. One thing of note for that, planning forward as we talk, either budgeting or in finance committee terms, with the last teacher negotiation, we were able to put a sunset clause in. So the district, when we go to levy, will be able to levy to help offset some of the retiree costs. So while maybe two, three years ago, they planned for this falling off the table, the OPEB trust looking more dire than we kind of anticipated, whereas now we're being able to levy forward and having that in our, in the teacher's contract is a very good thing for our district in terms of financial stability and what we can do to help offset some of those retirement costs. This is just the very base summary of what goes on. It's only the totals by fund. If you wanted to see by programs or areas and whatnot, broken down further, I can definitely help walk you through that in my office if you have any questions. Or if you have any questions on the summary, I can do my best answer now too.
Just, just in general, does each department have their own budgets that they can look at and allocate like maintenance, say know what their budget is going through the fiscal year, but they can and cannot spend?
There's some tweaking sometimes at the end of the year, you know, things come up or emergency-type things or whatever, but they're good about coming to Josh and I. But no, they, they know where their spending can be at.
They know where it is. Okay, every, okay.
I'll check you, I'll give them a guideline. And then as it gets close to the end of the year, maybe areas have overspent, underspent. There's a need in another area. And areas already spend all their money, but they really need to have something. We can usually try to find areas to move it around and do so. And that's why you see the need for the revisions of the budgets. We do our best in our office. When they hit their max, they're done and say no a lot. But when there's needs and necessities in classrooms or administration, we do our best to find what we can to move in your own.
And remember, every single request in this district comes through a PO and it goes through a filtering system and has to go through the, secretaries that enter it, they code it, and then it has to go through the principal and then it has to go through a meeting. And if it shows up yellow in the system, I mean, it's denied. So it's just a, it's a pretty good double-layered system. But sometimes there are needs that just happen. We understand that.
You may have mentioned the fund balance just a bit, but everybody would like to see it in double digits, of course, and we don't happen to be there. But in relative terms, we're like everybody else, aren't we? That's a pretty standard.
I think we're, we're not unique to any place in this world, I don't think. Outside of maybe a few very large districts that, you know, because I know, looking at numbers, it, it really can depend on circumstances, affordable with maybe a lower, higher needs and certain areas may have a higher fund balance because of certain issues. Whereas I think, relative in terms of districts, our size and our makeup, I think we're pretty consistent.
Okay. Here a motion to approve the final?
I'll make a motion to approve the final budget.
Jerry on the motion, Rob on the second. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Consideration to approve the resolution establishing dates for the filing affidavits of candidacy.
This is for Lori so that we can get candidates to run for school board. If Brenda wants to go to the middle, it's also on the big screen if you'd like to look at it there, whatever's easiest for you.
Okay. Just number one.
That middle section. Actually, I'll probably have to read all four on this one before.
Okay. This is a vote for the resolution establishing dates for filing affidavits of candidacy. The resolve of the School Board of Independent School District Number 252, State of Minnesota, as follows. The period for filing affidavits of candidacy for the Office of School Board Member of Independent School District 252 shall begin on July 31st, 2018 and shall close on August 14th, 2018. An affidavit of candidacy must be filed in the Office of School District Clerk and the $2 filing fee paid prior to 5:00 PM on August 14th, 2018. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause notice of said filing dates to be published in the official newspaper of the district at least two weeks prior to the first day to file affidavits of candidacy. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause notice of said filing dates to be posted at the Administrative Offices of the School District at least 10 days prior to the first day to file affidavits of candidacy. The notice of said filing date shall be substantially following in the following form.
Perfect.
You love that motion.
No, you're good.
Notice, yes, I should have to, it's not a complete sentence, I think.
Okay, so, so we need a motion in the second before the roll call vote.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Kurt. Also, second by Rob, you win the race. Other discussion? Kate, you're on.
Okay, Kurt?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Brenda, yes. Carrie, yes. Rob?
Yes.
Okay, that passes by a 6-0 vote. Thank you. Consideration to approve the 18, 19 High School League Resolution for Membership, procedural thing.
Yes, very procedural. This is another resolution, but it would be my recommendation to belong to the Minnesota State High School League. We need to do that. Here the conference. We do that. Where's that top?
2018, 2019 Resolution for Membership of the Minnesota State High School League. Resolved that the Governing Board of School Districts Member 252, County of Goodview, State of Minnesota, delegates, delegates the controls, supervision, and regulation of interscholastic athletic and fine arts events referred to in Minnesota Statute Section 128(c) 101 to the Minnesota State High School League. And so hereby certifies to the State Commissioner of Education as provided for by Minnesota statutes. Rob?
I'll make a motion.
Yep, motion.
I'll make a motion.
Katie on the motion, second.
I'll say.
Jerry on the second. Other discussion. Kate.
Rob?
Yes.
Katie?
Yeah.
Brenda, yes, Bob?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Okay, the resolution passes by a six-zero vote. Consideration to approve policy four twenty-five staff development and eighteen-nineteen staff development budget.
Right, every year, um, you know, there's money set aside for staff development. The policy is not anything you haven't seen before, but it's important that you, um, that you renew this. And then, um, the budget, which has also been attached, you can see that in your packet, nothing new, nothing different. Um, I will note that our staff development, um, has really made a commitment to Alice training. Uh, we'll be giving you an update later on that, but it's active shooter, active shooter training. Uh, we had fourteen of our staff members plus administration, um, and our local police department attend Alice, that'll be a part of that staff development budget. Um, so, again, uh, my recommendation would be to approve the policy and the budget.
Brenda on the motion.
I'll say.
Seconded by Kurt. Other discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Consideration to approve purchase of televisions to replace smart boards and projectors in the classroom.
Um, as you can see on the board, I think it's also in your packet, um, our smart boards are dying, you can't buy new smart boards. Um, it is better to get these smart TV, I wish we could think of a different word than TV, I think there's an interesting connotation that goes with that. Um, it's a smart format for teachers to use, um, and all their devices, so, um, it looks like she is, um, replacing number of devices, you can kind of see it on there. Um, best to go with Best Buy, they were able to give us the, the best deal on that. Uh, she does have this funding, um, again, Cannon Falls Ed Foundation, um, is up to twenty-five thousand dollars on some of this conversion as well, so. We've got a lot of backing and a lot of support in this, but, um, we still like to run it through the school board, so you understand what we're purchasing. And again, anything over ten thousand dollars, we bring to you anyway. It would be my recommendation to approve this, the smart boards are dead, they need something to use in their.
This is already in the, uh, tech budget.
Absolutely.
Kate, do we hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Jerry.
Purchase some televisions, oh, the Best Buy.
Which size, seventy-five?
My bad.
I'll make a motion to approve the Best Buy seventy-five inch smart TV for Best Buy, seven devices.
At a total cost of fourteen-six-six-five.
Yeah, that too. Jerry on the motion, did you get a second?
I'll say.
Seconded by Brenda, okay. Feels like this other discussion here, and anybody have anything else?
Anne cares what to do, two different sizes for everything, uh, we have the forty-inch and seventy-five inch.
She did a nice job of explaining that at Ed Foundation, um, the reason for that is the way our science rooms are set up, there are whiteboards and the rooms are very long, if you've been in there, they don't have room for seventy-five inches. So when they're looking at dissecting something, and she's got it on the screen here, and she wants the whole class to see it, it's better to have two forty inches up there, so that depending what side of the room you're on, you can look at what she's looking at in the microscope. If she puts up seventy-five inches, every kid in the room has to turn to the long end, and it just, they didn't fit well.
So are we talking about buying seven and seven?
Yes, the total cost is fourteen, fourteen-six-six-five.
Jerry only approved the seven, seventy-five inch, that's why I was wondering about the forty-inch lower, that wasn't.
I think we clarified it when we say at a total cost of fourteen-six-six-five.
Is that your intention, Jerry?
Yes, it was my intention.
Okay.
For the Best Buy.
As shown, person on the second. Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor to purchase as shown at a cost of fourteen-six-six-five. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie.
I do want to note that Amy has done a tremendous job, everything she gives Josh or I, it's always got three bids, she, she just does it without even being asked or being told to do it, or if she needs to. I really appreciate that, because I think in the world of technology, you always gotta be looking for the best deal, so, uh, kudos to her for taking that extra step each time.
Number twelve, consideration to approve the fiscal year nineteen property liability and work comp insurance renewal.
Um, it is on the board if you'd like to see it, uh, there is not much we can do about this, it's really important that we, um, renew this, obviously. Uh, they were able to come in, the workman's comp, if you know, is thirty-two-two, uh, came down from where it's been in the eighteen, what we use this year, is that right, Josh?
Yeah, yep, uh, Ram Mutual, Ram Mutual is a little company, it's forty-three thousand last year, just to kind of walk through the sheet, uh, the first thing to know really is the thing on the bottom left, uh, says quote deals for one year guaranteed with year two awarded, provided pricing remains competitive and the award insurance companies performance satisfy district's needs. Last year on this, we did, uh, the quote, uh, you, we had four quotes, and it was, uh, quote is guaranteed for one year with years two and three, uh, so now we've shortened up as you know, in year two of that, uh, process. So rather than seeing, uh, four quotes to compare from and choose, um, since as far as we were aware and everything worked great with none of their agents, but our insurance companies for both Hanover and Ram, um, and there's no need to not go with them, uh, we've got the insurance renewal. In terms of comparisons, the total property insurance, you'll see it broken down by your property and land marine, uh, and whatnot, seventy-four thousand, two hundred dollars. Last year the quote was seventy-two thousand, the actual we paid was about seventy-two thousand eight. Uh, the reason the actual's higher than the quote is, uh, the addition and subtraction for a few vehicles, so you'll see some changes in there as we add the vehicle and the, uh, you gotta pay a premium for that. Uh, so let's say it's pretty flat. Uh, this year's work comp insurance, uh, quote thirty-two thousand three hundred, uh, last year it was quoted forty-three thousand, we had it paid forty-seven-nine. Uh, and that's not, uh, uncharacteristic of a district as well as, every year we have a work comp audit, they come back in and they'll go through our actual payroll numbers, and that's how they base our work comp, uh, quotes and bids on. Uh, their estimate for our payroll was off from what the actual was, so we had to pay the difference in the work comp premium. Uh, that's why last year was forty-seven-nine. Uh, so when we add our property and work comp quote together for this renewal, we come to one oh-six-five-hundred. Uh, last year, our actual amount was one hundred twenty thousand, uh, in terms of, uh, this renewal, about a fourteen thousand dollar savings in all for property liability and work comp.
Josh, I know that Aaron really, really feels strongly about cyber protection, and I know we have some of that through Witek. Were you able to contact them and find out what that would cost us if we wanted to go?
No, we had to put that together, so I had to contact Laura and Mary and see if they put something together.
I think it'd be worth at least discussing, I know that, you know, some districts have been hit really hard with that, that might be something we want to look at in our policy.
Oh, at the Witek meeting a couple of months ago, we talked about
Oh, good.
Insurance, one of the things that came back is the vendors being insured. When Home Depot got hacked, it wasn't from inside, it was outside, you know, when we have so many people internally getting emails from external vendors who could hack into our systems, do they carry insurance that would cover us if they're the instigator, the ones who got us hacked? And that was one of the questions that we'd ask them, is is there insurance that we don't have to buy, but our vendors, is that a qualification we can start asking of them to carry the insurance for cyber attacks?
And the response was?
Still looking at it.
Okay, that's what I thought, it's, it's really tough to
Right.
And it's hard to market it, I mean, they don't know what to charge us if they were doing, and then when it actually happens, what's that entail, and what does it really cover?
That's the biggest thing, is you can buy all the insurance you want, but if it doesn't cover anything, then
Right.
That's why we're looking at, you know, my services, outside vendors, if that's where it comes from and they can show, should they have liability?
Well, I think, I think we should still look into that and get that answer back too.
Just looking to see what this quote might be.
I was happy to see the workman's comp go down so much, I think that's, that's a good sign that we're doing some great things around here, so, that's good, thank you, Josh.
There's kind of, must be a, a finite number of insurers, that, you know, we had four last time, we've got one this time.
Yeah, and it, there's a finite number of insurers that will do schools, a lot of them are getting out, they're in Riverport for many years. Um, our agent has been for quite a while, uh, pre-rent insurance, um, but the company's been in Riverport and Riverport's kind of doing the school business. Um, so, and I'm sure there's various reasons for wanting them to, move them to get out of it. Uh, and then what you're into is you find an agent and they'll come in and they wanna sign up, um, X, Y, and Z insurance companies, so they get the loan quote from that company, otherwise you have several, several agents trying to get the quote from the same company, so, uh, we've kind of found beneficial to go with an agent we trust. Uh, uh, maybe next time we go through that, we go through that again, uh, but then let them find and do our process for us as a bidding, and find four or five suitable quotes and kind of meter it out that way. Uh, but yeah, you're right, in terms of wanting to quote school district insurance, it's not, it's not everybody that wants to do it.
It's just really interesting that there's less that are able to quote or that want to quote, but yet our premium actually went down, you'd almost expect it to skyrocket.
Yeah, and you're almost like, yeah, so.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the property liability and work comp renewal?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Jerry.
I'll say.
Seconded by Rob, other discussion.
Just real quick, what, what does all the property insurance, what does that all in, um, involve or?
It's all for property, just like it would be your home.
So that'd be in the bus garage and CCC, that sort of thing?
Absolutely.
Facilities, yeah, facilities.
Good question, thanks.
Not, and just one last thing on, uh, discussion, I, it's all based on evaluation of our properties and our building and assets and
Just.
You know, it really is an estimate, uh, based on kind of what we've paid out for things when we do a building project. The last one was twenty million dollars, so we kind of go by that number. Um, if you really wanted to get it narrowed down and get a better evaluation, uh, it would be good at some point for us to start at a may facility committee type level, uh, having a group come in and literally just go through and inventory everything in the building, so we know what, who has what, where it's at, and, uh, what an actual dollar value on things are, just, um, because everything in the property is based on the valuation of the buildings and the assets inside of it.
We did that, but it's been a few years.
Been quite a while, yeah.
That dates me. I remember it, okay.
So you're saying that the smart TV, or the TVs aren't covered unless we list them?
No, they are, because when, when Laura and I will sit down, we'll say, hey, we bought twenty-five thousand dollars of the smart TVs, and I would have to figure
It's easy to look at a budget, but we're just not good.
Yeah, so, but it's, you know, narrowed down from the United States to Minnesota, so.
So you don't have any idea on what an audit of our fiscal?
Uh, no, I'd have to research some, I know Maximus at the time, a while ago, would be one of the companies that would come in and do it, but, but ten, I wanna say nine to ten thousand dollars at that point. Um, and really, what we're looking at, when we insure, is the threshold of a dollar amount, and they, they only really don't do, I don't know, not tell you on camera what that dollar amount is, but, um, you know, that's what we're really looking at when we insure something. Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion, the second on the floor. Discussion is over, all in favor of the approval of the renewal of these, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's Carrie. Consideration to approve the resolution approving Two Fifty-Two Area Schools Long Term Facility Maintenance Ten Year Plan.
All right, I know you all read this ahead of time, you will get one from Cannon Falls Schools and one from Goodham County Ed District, because you are a member of theirs. Uh, the plans are in here, they are resolution in format, um, if you have any questions on them specifically, uh, you do this again every year. Remember, this is how we get our funding mechanisms, a lot of this is done through UNESCO, they do our ten-year long-term planning for us. Um, if you have any specific questions, I can answer those, otherwise this is a very standard procedure, um, on how we get a lot of our funding.
Listen, John, Beth, I'm looking, this is for years out, but when they have asbestos rule encapsulation, they assume we have asbestos, or why is that in there?
It's always built in there, if anything was to ever be uncovered, um, that you aren't aware of, um, that's how Dave explained it to me, because I asked the same question, like, no, we took care of all of that, it's just that if it was to happen, that's what he said.
Like if we stole it, we will.
Yeah, okay.
Can we do a motion, the second, and then you can read the resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Kurt. Second.
I'll say.
By Katie. Okay.
Which part do I read on this one?
Just the resolution, the top part.
Okay, it's for the resolution approving and authorizing the submission of the district's ten-year plan to the Minnesota Department of Education. Kurt?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
And, oh, Rob?
Yes.
Brenda, yes, Katie, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, that passes by a six-zero vote. Moving down, consideration to approve the resolution approving School District Sixty-Fifty-One G C E D Long Term Facility Maintenance Ten Year Plan.
And you will notice theirs looks very, very similar to ours, because they, um, use a similar facility.
Oh, it's crazy.
That's not, that's not, it's up on the screen, everybody.
Brenda?
Well, it's not the same facility, the same organization, UNESCO helps some of theirs as well. They, they help write them for us, draft them for us.
Six hundred thousand plus a year, they just built that facility.
I, I won't be able to answer any G C D questions, so, if you have any questions on G C D, we'd have to take you in.
We have to move it down to G C D.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to Carrie.
Motion by Brenda to approve, second.
I'll say.
Seconded by Jerry. Discussion?
Okay, they take it back to Rob's question, is to, why the, the cost?
It's a brand-new facility, right, just built three years, three years in.
Oh, what part are you looking at, Rob?
I'm looking, I mean, at the total at the end of the year.
Are you, like, their expenditure plan, or the?
Six seventy, yeah, well, total of revenue, let's see. Let's try and make this right. So the total new raw revenue at the bottom.
Four sixty-two, that one?
Six seventy.
Six seventy-three. Is that expenditures, or is that revenue?
You've got the Goodham Falls Districts?
Yeah.
During that's page forty-two?
Little bottom line, yeah.
Oh, no, page twenty-eight, you're looking at.
Yeah, it is. Page twenty-eight is Cannon Falls District.
Oh.
It looks like G C D is four sixty-two. Oh, that's two thousand twenty-eight, no, two thousand eighteen, is it? Two forty-six.
What page are we supposed to be on?
I'm looking at page forty-two.
Forty-two, forty-two, forty, forty-four.
Yeah.
Oh, there's forty-two.
Yeah.
Not a problem. No. Still there's many, oh.
I see, uh, districts, long-term facility maintenance revenue allocation. That's Cannon Falls Districts, twelve thousand six hundred.
Okay.
Oh, great.
I wasn't knowing with that.
Total for our analysis, G C D is seven thousand.
Eighty-seven, pretty gross, I'm.
His score hasn't changed.
Okay, no.
Thank you. Okay, Brenda.
I wrote, uh, wrote Rob.
Yes.
Katie, Brenda, yes, Bob?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Katie, that's.
I forget her response, yes.
We skipped you.
She said yes. I said yeah.
Consideration to approve the final number of calendar days for the seventeen-eighteen school year, one hundred and seventy-one total.
Yeah, you get to do this every year, whenever I fall, it's no, you guys have to reapprove the numbers, you're well within your numbers with the state, um, where everything is good. Um, to protect us, we are, you know, doing a bold plan for next year, which you've already approved, so, we're really excited to move forward with that, so our kids can have some continual learning. Uh, but yeah, you do need to vote, and it would be my recommendation, um, to approve this.
I'll make a motion, go ahead, Katie.
I'll make a motion.
Katie on the motion.
I'll say.
Seconded by Kurt. Other discussion.
What is this date number of days, one seventy?
Four. It's student contact days, yeah. Um, you, sometimes you get them here for half-day, it still counts, you know, a lot of people are doing online days, it's, we have student contact days of one hundred seventy-four, teacher contact is one eighty-four.
But the one of one hundred seventy-one?
Does that, that follow, okay? The three, we had three days off? Yep, we had three, they're listed there.
Right.
And that's okay, what's the state minimal? It's student seat hours and calculation, I think you can go down to one sixty-eight even? Oh, okay.
Okay, that's what I'm looking at.
I can, I can get that back to you, but I'm pretty sure it's on like a one sixty-eight.
Okay.
Kate, we have a motion and a second on the floor. For, uh, the approval as shown, all in favor, say aye. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have Carrie.
I do have one thing I want to pass out quick, I guess it's not really a line item. Um, in preparation for your, um, your, uh, retreat, here are my goals from this year. Um, and I'll just quickly run through them, they might help you build some goals for me for the upcoming years. Um, the first goal you had for me was educator effectiveness and student success. Um, I listed some items that I feel were completed this last year. Um, the second goal was OPEB. You'll see that this is the only, um, goal that I have not completed, um, was one of them you gave me. The first part was completed, we did guide, um, the negotiations team through writing a sunset clause into the seventeen nineteen teacher master agreement. That is a very integral part of that first step into OPEB. So what you'll see there in purple is reviewing, um, this next year I will be preparing you to walk you through a levy and to communicate, um, that out to our public, because we'll need to go for levy again on that. Goal number three was creating documents, um, this was really a passion of Jerry's, I know. Rental policies and fundraising polit, procedures. Um, both of those are attached in your agenda, they are also printed as a copy here on the things that you have approved and updated. Um, it's been nice to now we have these officially in place, I know a lot of times there's a lot of questions. We're still working on some things with rental, um, as well, I know we want to look at some, what we're charging and things like that. But what I heard you asking me was, we need to get something in writing, we need to encourage Jake and his department, uh, we want this to be in place, and so those have been done. And the last one, I wasn't sure exactly how to write up, it was on personal development. Um, some of those goals were, I did complete my national certification in February. Um, I did do a state of the school address, a TED talk that is now, um, out there and in the public, and I did do a capstone. Um, I did join Ruth's Table, it's a female organization, um, for school leaders, well, leaders in general, um, and did some fun things, um, I actually was their facilitary, facilitator at their main event this last year, so it was kind of fun, too. So, um, I know there's one goal that, you know, hasn't completely been done, but that's because we're not ready to do the levy, but I think everything's in place for that. So hopefully this helps you, guide you in for maybe five goals, um, that you set for me for the upcoming years. So if I can help in that, this is just a tool that maybe, maybe you want to branch off of something off of this, or maybe there's something totally different. Um, I think transportation would be a, a really good area for you to look at. Um, as far as some, you know, where we want to go, and I think Rob knows what I'm talking about, we've taken the first steps in itemizing, you know, and with everything that's going into each vehicle, uh, but I think transportation would be another overhaul kind of area. Uh, we've started that process, but I think kind of getting it in writing and doing some of those things. Um, but I'm up for whatever you think the goal should be. Um, you know, last year I thought that really helped to have all the departments have a five-year goal. We are using those all the time now, and so that five-year plan in technology, facilities and technology, like, what did I say?
Technology, transportation.
Facilities and transportation, those three are still being used, so when you think that these goals just go away, they don't. They do kind of continue on, so make sure that your goals for me are something you really want to see done, and, and something that can really improve the district. So, hopefully it helps you, if it doesn't, you can recycle it to.
When's the last time I had a transportation meeting?
Uh, we'll do a kickoff to the year again, um, there wasn't really a need for anything, we've been really monitoring expenditures and things like that, but there's not really much of a need in the summer, because no one's around. The biggest problem we're having right now is shortage of drivers, if you know anyone that's interested in driving, please have them call Andy. We're really, really struggling with that.
Okay.
What is the?
Bus and van.
Bus and van, yeah.
Um, July sixteenth at six PM in this room, we'll have some, uh, box lunch brought in, so we can
Yeah.
have a working meeting, and we did talk, uh, we sent through a mail to people to just bring some ideas and goals. And as of right now, we have two things, possibly we just add the third thing for our agenda item, but traditionally we try to keep those things limited.
Yeah, let Lori and us working in an official agenda together.
Yep. You can see, uh, taking a look at, uh, what's on our July twenty-third meeting. And anything else you think is of concern, you can, uh, call in and check it out with either Beth or Lori. Having said that, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
From anyone, Carrie on the motion. Second?
I'll say.
Oh, I thought you guys wanted to stay. Brenda on the second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.